Fox.
Let's go ahead and get started with our work session. First up is the gender review and all the normal things. In the, the meeting, one of the things I just put in here for. We don't have one today, but for the next meeting, this is going to be something I'm going to just be carrying on the schedule from now on. Uh, we've had a couple of times where people from. Uh, commissions or whatever have come up to talk about something going on in the commission. In public comment, that's not really a public comment, it's not really a presentation. So I'm just putting in a commission reports tab. Anytime they want to do that, that's where that'll go in the meeting, it'll go between. Presentations and proclamations and staff reports. And basically I get that it's almost a staff report, but just to have them have a time if they've got something that they want to present to be able to do that. We don't have any public hearings, we don't have any unfinished business, we've got several new business items and first one is qualifying fees. From the clerk.
This year, November 4th is a municipal election for the city of Chattahoochee Hills. Where we will be electing the mayor and two council members, district two and four. And we have to public set and publish the qualifying fees. For that election by February 1st, according to OCG. And that's the resolution, uh, setting the fees for the mayor is $144 for the two council members is 108.
And that's a statutory thing based on a percentage of the.
Of the previous salary.
There's no discretion there for us.
Right.
Cool. All right. Uh, next is a, uh, resolution pointing board members to the CVB. We had somebody move away. Robbie, you talking about that?
Have a vacancy of two. So. Let me flip to my page. Here, should have been more prepared, but. We do, we do have a vacancy of, um, Brooke Lecour, she moved out, so we had to fill that vacancy and we want to be able to fill that. Vacancy coming up here, so we do have, um. Suzanne Siderwood, which we know her as. Carl Buchard's spouse, but she's Suzanne Siderwood, she has stepped up and, and volunteered to serve in that capacity in district two and. We would very overwhelmingly love to have her on the board with her background and experience and, and such, and she's a resident and can, going to continue to be a resident of Chattahoochee Hills.
My understanding is that Richie's happy with that too, and I mean, I don't know if anybody knows her background, but she was the head of. The.
Yeah.
Georgia. Convention and visitor bureau, chamber of commerce or whatever for a while and then was also the head of. Atlanta Gaslight.
Yeah, it, and then went up to Illinois and was a power up there.
He's got a pretty, pretty broad and.
Yeah, CEO of that organization, so. And, and just very, very just. Engaging, charismatic and, and super nice lady, so love to have her.
Anybody have any issue with that? All right. Uh, next up is the donation to Brickworks.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, this is, uh, in the budget year, we put in capital $20,000 to the library, uh, last year, last, last year, this fiscal year. Um, they haven't spent any of it yet, uh, but they've been working with Brickworks because Brickworks kind of operates the library. And they want to do some renovations and in order to do those renovations, they're costly and we have financial policies in place, you know, as you know, anything over $2,500. Got to get some phone quotes, anything over $7,000, got to get three written quotes and they're talking about renovations above and beyond $20,000 over there, they're adding to it, Brickworks, you know, we're talking like $40,000. So for them to do that and get contractors, uh, they, we would have to go through our financial policies to do that. If we just said, all right, here, this, here's the $20,000 we budgeted, we're just going to allocate it over like a grant, like we've done with Bear Creek and other locations. You guys don't have to worry about your financial policy, you don't have to get those quotes that we have to get and, and make it much smoother and facilitate the process. Uh, for those renovations and they got a lot of improvements, got new furniture, going to be coming, new renovations of the children's library area. And some expansions and such, so we thought. It'd be better just to, from a finance standpoint, for us just to go ahead and, and allocate those funds to them and let them continue with those opera, or continue to facilitate those improvements.
So. That also makes it easier for them to use people like Peter, right? They can kind of half volunteer stuff.
Right, right.
Good to me. Questions about that? All right, and then the next one is the, uh, right away phase of the Cedar Creek Bridge.
That's exciting, but also pricey, you know, Cedar Creek Bridge, one is, uh, down on land and as you cross over into Coweta or as you cross over Coweta into our city. We know that bridge is in dire need of repair, um, basically just restoration completely. Well, it's, it's programmed, federally programmed bridge to be improved and anytime you go to a federal program, it, it takes a long time, uh, to get those. Our former council member Cyril knows how those bridge projects can take some time, um, but they got to do right away acquisitions, so this is the first tier, there's. Two more tiers to come and there's going to be right away acquisition more like $75,000 the next time and then more the next time, but that's the right away, they're going to be. Paying for the construction and, and all the other stuff, but we have to contribute from the city for the right away, which is actually. A small, small of what the cost of this bridge is going to be, so this is the $50,000 we're going to allocate out of TSPLOST, it qualifies, so. That's the bu, that's the benefit, so we had to commit to that, otherwise, you know. We won't get this bridge built unless we do it on our own dime. That's what that is.
Questions about that? And some of the things that we have to do to move that ball forward.
Yeah. No, because I think some of the school buses even go around at times. For whatever reason, right?
Yeah, this still not programmed till I think 2028, so this is just right away, but look, this is a big step. We've already signed the paperwork to move this part to this level, so this is a big step to get this bridge done, even though we know it's still 2028 that they're projecting to even start construction. So at least we're getting it done. In 2028, that'll be here before you know it, I mean, 2025. You got here before you know it, right? I mean, how many people remember Y2K? Remember that? That's 25 years ago, that's quarter of a century ago. I always remember in high school, I was going to party like it's 1999, I didn't even realize, wow, 1999, that's far away. And then boom, now we're in 2025. So 2028, guys, we're going to get this three years away, don't worry. Not as far as 1999 was.
We're, we're getting close to that thing, you always see these things like, we're born on this date, we're born closer to the Civil War than today, you know, like it's, we're, we're getting closer and closer to that one.
It's, it's, yeah, scary, right?
All right. Yeah. Moving, not quite the Civil War yet, but I mean, it's that kind of.
It is, it's, yeah, I feel it, I feel it.
Any, any questions about that one? If not, then the next one is the easement. Thing. Who's going to talk to us about that easement thing?
Good time now, I get a discount at the movie theater, by the way. You want to talk about the easement, you want me to though? Okay, I'm already up here, yeah, this is the, um, construction easement, um, for the trust for public land, they're still, you know, working. On our parks and such, so this is just the temporary construction easement we've allocated to them before and we're continuing to allow that and. Because they haven't finished with the construction, we're okay with that because they're doing the work, they, we just, we're changing language and instead of picking a date, we're going to say until it's done and then. We'll let the construction easement expire, but they have to have that for them to do the work.
Where is the easement?
This is down off of Hamilton Redwine, uh, where they're doing Riverlands, so.
They, they made some additions to what they were doing that have delayed. Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's all good news.
Unknown donor, known as. But he couldn't get our Falcons to win, Ruby, broke my heart. Be quiet.
All right, all right.
We got next year.
Again, any questions about that? It's all good news.
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm going to try keeping this moving along.
Yes, sir.
Next one up is Mike. First read on rezoning request for. Hamlet on, uh, Rico Road.
That's right, we have an application from Rico Investments LLC for 273.89 acres, about 274 acres on Rico Road. Uh, right at and near the intersection of, uh, Rico Road and Vernon Grove Road, of course Vernon Grove Road is an unpaved road. Uh, there are several parcels, um, one of the parcels lies on the north side of Rico Road, uh, just under 30 acres. Um, but the bulk of the property lies on the, on the south side of, of Rico Road. Um, that bulk on the south side backs up to the property that was recently rezoned as part of Serenby, the Serenby, uh, G lots. Um, uh, to the south. Um, the proposal shows 71% of the property protected as open space. Uh, shows 274 residential units, um, clustered in four main areas, one of which is on the north side of Rico Road with its own entrance. Um, there are two connections to Rico Road, um, one serving that, that small northern section. Um, one, uh, directly opposite of Hopkins Road, serving the bulk of the hamlet and then another one on Vernon Grove Road. Um, uh, when we faced this issue before of a hamlet proposing and, uh, a connection to a, a gravel road. Uh, we added a condition saying that it would be for, um, only allowed for, um, emergency access and, uh, you know, bike ped equestrian use, uh, those sorts of things and. Staff intends to propose a, another such condition in, in this case. Um, uh, the rezoning would mean, um, at least 191 acres would be preserved permanently as open space and/or civic space. Um. And it proposes a little over an acre of land for non-residential uses, um, the HMMU district, which is the proposed zoning district. Requires a minimum of 10,960 square feet of non-residential floor area in a district the size calculated based on district size. Um, the applicant has indicated that they envision, um, maybe office professional uses, maybe an eatery, uh, boutique clothing store, um, some of those sorts of things are what they, what they have in mind for the space. Um, because of the size of the proposal, the city requires a traffic study. Um, we have not, uh, yet received one, um, staff recommendation, um, until it's received will, will simply be forward deferral. But because of the calendar imposed by the zoning, um, there will be a, a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting and then of course at the next city council meeting. Um, uh, and I imagine those will be continued if we don't have the, the, the traffic study in hand. Um, we have the applicant here, uh, if anyone has questions for them. That's what I've got.
Mike, when is, first read, but if anybody has any questions, fire away.
About when would we expect the traffic study to be completed?
So they, they had, when we spoke about it, they were hoping to have it before the planning commission meeting, I'm skeptical that they'll be able to wrap it up by then, but I would think. Um, uh, I would think they would be able to have it done by next month's council meeting.
That was it.
Yeah.
So by the February council.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I would, that's anticipated, of course, the work isn't done yet, you don't know if there might be something that comes up of a technical nature that delays it, but yes, that's right.
And where? What is? Can the applicant speak to the availability of, uh, infrastructure for this project?
Uh, good afternoon, Chris West, I represent the applicant, that's, uh, address is 135 Wimberly Estates Drive, Newton, Georgia. So, uh, the, in terms of sewer and water sewer capacity will be, uh, brought from the north. Uh, which is going to be a part of a development that, um, this, uh, the principles of this entity own as well to the north side. And, uh, as a part of that development, sewer will be brought down, uh, from that, from that location.
What is that location?
Um, is within the. City of, uh, uh, Palmetto, I believe. Um, I don't have the exact parcel, but it's essentially, or Mike may remember.
Whenever you inquire, you mentioned the corner of Rico Tatum and Cochrane Mill.
Yeah, there, there you go.
And.
And then wa, in terms of water, uh, I'm trying to remember offhand, but I believe that there is, uh, there are, there's city, excuse me, there's Fulton County water that is, it's nearby that will be brought down.
Where's the water, Mike?
Cochrane Mill Road, closest.
Cochrane.
City of Atlanta.
Yeah, city of Atlanta, yeah.
And then, and then, uh. You arranged easements to move all the, the infrastructure to the property?
Uh, so that these, um. It won't be an issue because the, um, the principles that own this entity also own the, the other related entities that would be. Uh, giving the easements.
If, if any others have questions, but go ahead, go ahead, I'm just checking.
Is, I have a question, the business area? Um, orient me to that a little bit, because I don't, is that going to be, that's phase one, I'm looking at, you've got two, three phases. Um. Is that? Detailed out, I just.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mike.
And have you seen some building footprint?
Okay, yeah, I see.
Those are obvious.
Absolutely. Like where those small lots are, it looks like, like maybe town home section or something, it's in where those are.
That's right, that's where I, yeah, the concept plan as it is, partly.
And does this plan, do you have, I don't, maybe I'm missing it, like sort of the, your pedestrian. Area, like walking area, have you sketched that out yet? Sort of connect the connectivity part? Because I think the dotted lines I'm looking at are just the wetland or.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that yet, obviously, that is something generally the council's going to want to see.
Oh, I was just looking like weird, yeah.
Brills.
We've discussed them, but I don't.
Did y'all discuss maybe connecting the Palmetto project to this via trails at all? Down the sewer line, I don't know.
Station property. To the south. Excuse me.
Yeah, Mike, you just want to, sure you review with them, you know, the, the kind of application requirements for showing that kind of stuff, right?
Right, right, this is, this is, we're talking about pedestrian, the, the connectivity, yes, in fact, we, yeah, we did have the, the conversation, the applicant actually is in favor of a vehicular connection. Um, I don't know if we might have topo issues, we would certainly require at the plating phase that the easements be in place. Um, and, um, I think at least the improvements for pedestrian connections, I'm not sure if we would require at this point improvements for vehicular connection.
The other thing too is just again reinforcing the notion that we have some pretty serious restrictions on gravel roads, you already commented on that. And not allowing paving, not over a certain number of units to attach to. And so just making sure that in planning, they're looking at that too. The idea that it'd probably just a pedestrian access with an emergency access, but that's probably all.
Understood, yes.
Do you have any plans for any community meeting?
Uh. At, at this point, we do not, I think it affects. To me, the, the effect is minimal based on the number of residences or lack thereof nearby. Um. It's also sort of, um. Could, if there's a contiguous development, which is very similar, uh, that seems to have gotten, have, have had well reception, so. I assume it would be well received, but, um, I don't, don't know, Richard.
Can you speak to the connectivity to, uh, what's labeled phase three on the, on the east side of Rico Road? On this thing? It, it looks like there's a vehicle outlet onto the road itself, south of the creek. But.
What else?
Right, I've seen that.
There's, there's no internal access.
In terms of, uh. Vehicular access between the phase three and the other phases across the road or?
Well, yeah, what makes it? Connect, what makes it part of the same?
I would anticipate. That for driveway separation requirements, you would just simply want the, the one existing drive into phase three. Um, and not any particular connection to the others. Not, if they're too close, you're going to have conflict points that would be a safety hazard.
What's the, what is it, 1500 feet?
Right. Are you suggesting the driveway should be closer together? We would certainly require, again, at the, uh, at, at the plating phase, probably at the perimeter lap phase, that there are, um, mapped and, and constructed pedestrian connections across, you know, with a crossing, a crossing on Rico Road.
And that the traffic study too will give us insight into whether turn lanes or whatever those are.
Yeah, I think a pedestrian would make sense.
Definitely. Given the topo, it'd be hard to line up the.
Right, it would, right, with the, with the creek, um, very difficult to line up those entrances, I think lining it up with Hopkins Road made sense. Um. Uh, and then the other is, uh, right, sort of stands to the side.
How many, so phase three is 30 acres? So like 30 homes, is that, I don't know what, I don't, I didn't see.
So on the north side, the number of.
Yet for phase three. I was just thinking about how many people that's impacting, like, how many people are you going to have coming and going, trying to cross the street to the.
I'm trying to remember exactly by phase.
Because.
Just based on the size of the, like, much.
Would that, Mike, would that require like a speed table type of crossing scenario too? Part two. Part two.
Some sort of traffic call, like a speed table would be a good idea there, yeah.
Okay.
Those numbers, um, uh, we don't have those numbers, I don't know if the applicant has numbers in mind, um, if it's important to set a limit, um, that's something we could do by condition. We want to make sure that, that. The number on the, on the north side does not exceed a certain. Um, a, a certain number.
Thanks, I was just making a note. I don't, I don't. I was ju, just listening to council member Foster, I would maybe encourage a little. Public engagement potentially.
Okay.
Um, that for me, I mean, I'm, that's my opinion on that, maybe, I know that she seemed to think that was a good idea, I know what others think. Although.
Always.
Right, all right, happy to do that, appreciate, appreciate that feedback. And I was getting that from Councilman Foster as well, she, I saw the questions, so I, I was reading you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
How long was, how long was that area farmed?
The trees are pretty big on analysis, been, been a while since it's been.
Been at least 20 years.
Was that a negative? It is, too, he's not here.
I know, I saw that, like a quarry or something was there, some, some point in time.
Of Vernon Grove and Rico Road. They would.
I was just struck by.
Had a big hole?
By the phrase, no reasonable economic use when it was farmed for a hundred and forty odd years and also residential, so.
Topos are tough, would be tough to farm it, trees probably be the best, best thing.
Wait, say that again, I'm sorry.
The, the topos would make it tough to, to, to row crop farm it, um, but you could tree farming, probably be the forestry would probably be. The one thing you could do.
Anything else? Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right. I'm going to try to keep us moving because we've got a lot of stuff on the, uh, work session agenda and. Not much, not much time, this is one of those that probably would have been well served by having the meeting start earlier, but. Couldn't notice that because that was. So. Sorry about that, uh, House Bill 581, Robbie, want to talk to us about what the latest is on that?
Presentation that we can refer to if we need to on House Bill 581. Um, last year, there's a referendum, uh, on the, on the ballot, people voted for, for tax exemption, I mean, who would not want a tax exemption? What this one does though, this is, uh, throughout the state, state of Georgia, it's called a FLOSS, which is a flo, floating local option sales tax. And what it does is it provides a 1% sales tax to cities that they can charge if they opt into this and you get that 1%. Okay, that sounds good, but you have to freeze your taxes at the current state. And then they're frozen, that point going forward, so you don't, you lock in the, the assessed value of the property unless it turns over. Uh, this, this is residential homesteaded properties, uh, not commercial. So those, you, you lose the increase in property values, you gain the 1%, but you lose the increase in property values as. This happens and what we have to do in, from a city standpoint, all the cities in Fulton County, except for those that get most municipal, municipal option sales tax, there's a few cities, Atlanta, Hayfield, College Park, a couple others. Uh, they get that, uh, they don't have to worry about it, but we have to opt in or opt out by March 1st, and there's some, there's some deadlines in the spreadsheet up there later on, uh, in, in the spread, in the, uh. Presentation that you have to move quick to opt out because you have to have three public hearings, in other words, you got to start advertising next week. And have this wrapped up by the end of February, because by March 1st, you have to, if you're opting out of doing this. Which most cities, we met with Fulton County, we actually met with Coweta too, because we've got part in Coweta. And everybody's of the opinion to opt in for this particular, you know, uh, this particular FLOSS. Of course, they benefit, in my opinion, more than we do because commercial. Does, this does affect commercials, so all these locations, counties, cities have commercial tax base, those commercial taxes still come in. We don't have commercial, we have very little commercial, so we're very heavy residential, those that are heavy residential tend to suffer more because again, your taxes are frozen at that point. Other cities have done this, and City Marietta is doing this since 80, something, 84, something like that, where they froze the taxes, and if you stay in that house, you don't move and doesn't change hands. That tax rate was a tax rate it was back then, um, or it's better. The way it's set up right now is you're going to get whatever exemption is, benefits you as a taxpayer. So if it benefits you to, to get a, a tax exempt, a different type of tax exemption, you go with that one. Um, the PowerPoint, I'm not following very well because it, it can be, it's very confusing, I've been to several meetings, both at Fulton County. And in, in Coweta, Fulton County did a great job, we had, uh, the, the, um, Association of, of City County. Um, Management Association there doing a presentation, had tax assessors there, had Arthur Ferdinand there, I mean, all the key players were in their room and all the cities were there and. It was, it was great, it was a lot of discussion, um, and. Right now, the time, what came to me from these meetings that we have to do ourselves, which is kind of surprising. Is we have to go ahead and let the county know that what our millage rate we anticipate to be, and what they want you to do is to set it. At a rollback rate, but not a huge rollback rate, because you don't know what that rollback's going to be yet, you just don't, you know, they're, they're, Fulton County's anticipating their taxes to be about 3% higher, so. They're anticipating rolling back about that much, so we want, you can set it, in other words, we got to have a resolution provided to the county, I want to bring it to you next month. A resolution saying, here's what our millage rate is proposed to be, so they'll go ahead and do that. A resolution saying, here's what our millage rate is proposed to be. So they'll go ahead and do that. And they gotta have that by March first. So that's fine, we'll do that. So chances are, we're just, I'm gonna come to you with a resolution saying, our millage rate's gonna be what it is today. We don't know what it's gonna be in August, but we have to do this resolution. They have to go ahead. Really, the onus is on the counties more so than on us. I mean, and the tax assessors more so. The work's on them and the tax commission, they just did a billing, but it's a, it's a big. It's, it's a tough job for the county to do, but if House Bill five eighty-one, it takes a lot more for me to go over than right now. I could, like, I got Daryl back there, we can go through each of these slides, but I'm just trying to gauge your input and understanding of where we are right now. Basically, I'm just trying to get the highlights that we have to have that resolution in place to say, here's our millage rate, even though we don't know what our millage rate's gonna be.
So just to be clear, if you adopt the FLOS, you're freezing your assessment and your millage rate or just your assessment?
Just assessment, yeah. But your millage rate, you have to roll it back to the amount of the, in other words, there has to be a rollback, so.
I understand, but in, in subsequent years, if you're collecting less, then you raise the millage rate.
Right, yeah, you can get, you can absolutely, yes, if you raise your millage rate, you just.
Sounds like something like this would have upward pressure on millage rate.
It's a state. It's a mathematical construct, right? We just need to do the math on what the likely impact on us is gonna be. To your point, we don't have much commercial tax base. So it should be fairly easy math.
Yeah.
And again, I, I'm just back from being gone, so I have not dug into this, but that's, to me, this is an hour or two with a spreadsheet side, whether or not this makes sense for us financially. And I guess the point is, even if you adopt it, you have ways to correct the problem, create a problem.
Right. In the timeline that they, that we have, every, every city in every county in the state, this is a state, the state collects the money. The state distributes this FLOS to the counties and the county in turn distributes to the cities, that's how.
And this is done per rather, just like lost it.
Right. So the timing of opting out is where it becomes real critical. If you wanted to opt out of there, if you can scroll down to the end, way toward the end, you'll see the timeline. Should become right there. I think that's what it is. I can hardly see it. But it talks about, this is this tentative about what you, I can't really read it, you probably can't either, but yeah, you, you're starting about this month, you start having the public hearings, advertising, then public hearings, you gotta have three public hearings to opt out because it has to be opted out by March first. And the people that are opting out are doing it now.
So the, the public hearings are just that, the public hearings where you're gonna describe what's happening. Council won't be able to make any decision on this till the February council meeting.
Right.
Right? So we're not gonna be telling people for sure what we're gonna be doing, just this is what the possibilities are.
Right.
The third public hearing would be one if the council decided to do or not do it, we could let people know, why people. Again, the math, you know, if you're freezing assessments until the houses sell, average house sells once every eight years, so that's just a mathematical thing. See what the rate of growth is against the one percent. I'm sure it's one of those things where you probably make a little more the first couple of years and then a little less next couple of years. Forevermore, unless you're raising millage. Again, it's a math problem. Anybody have any?
So it's totally frozen? Or do they add?
That math together, send it out.
Can they increase it by, like, with inflation, with the CP every year? They can?
No, you, no.
It's totally frozen.
It's totally frozen now. If you make improvements, new, new improvements to the house, then it becomes, like, if you do an add-on, now all of a sudden, now it's a new assessment.
Fulton County doesn't capture those, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, again, it's, it's, we'll get the math done in the next week and we'll get that out to everybody, kind of what the math says is the likely outcome here. And then, you know, it's, it's in part a mathematical conversation and part of political conversation.
Majority of the, the cities in the county, Fulton County are, are, are opting in, they're opting.
Because they have commercial tax base and it doesn't impact them so much. Again, hard to, hard to even talk about without the math.
But I can share this presentation with you guys too. Plus, when I took some notes and I put them in your packet, it's just kind of like, I'll takeaways. When I was scrambling, I was typing on my, my computer during the Fulton County meeting and just taking some notes and some key points and stuff they were talking about. But it was, I was sitting by the side of my buddy, Tom Harris, who's the finance director in, in Alpharetta, and it was funny, he was correcting the speakers. He knew more about it than they did. And it's like, you, you guys, you need to get your act together because this is not how it works. This is how I read it and I go, oh yeah, you're right, so.
Robert, I think it would be good if we can have some information for the residents so they can understand because it's not gonna only affect the, gonna affect them.
Yeah, well, they're gonna benefit the most from the standpoint of tax relief, their absolute guaranteed tax relief. Where they don't benefit is, okay, what services do, are gonna be impacted because of what you're doing. So that's, that's the, the double edged sword there, so.
Well, and, and, and I, I'm not reading this correctly, in order for this to happen, then sales taxes go up everywhere by a point.
Yes, one percent.
So I mean, again, you might save some on your home taxes, but you pay more for your everything else, you know?
There's a one percent.
That, that's the math. And to your point, Ruby, right, like, we need to have that math to people too, so they understand the actual impact.
Is, where does it go up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's a very similar question. It's only sales tax within the municipality, right? We only, is, is this a county share like the other sales tax or is this just?
It's a, it's a county share.
Oh, okay.
But it's only collected in the cities that opt in, right? So they, all the cities that opt in get a share based on their population of money collected in the county. And generally, those kind of things benefit us a little because we don't have that much sales tax revenue collected. But again, it's just a math.
Yep.
You can suppose, but there's no point in supposing.
But yeah, there's not.
Sales tax is going up anyway.
Sorry?
They're all opted in, so the sales tax is going anyway, is that what?
Everywhere we shop, probably.
So we don't shop.
Right.
Okay.
So yeah, every city and county in the state or right now are having this very discussion.
So what, what happens if everybody opts into this thing and then the citizens don't approve the taxing?
Then you lose. Yeah.
So you, yeah.
That model doesn't look good.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. That's perfect. Thoughtful plan. That came from the legislature, right?
And then Fulton County then has to distribute our share to us.
Except for the other cities, the cities that don't have, the cities that have the most, they can opt out without problem because they got the municipal options.
Already. That predates, we're not allowed to do that. That predates our city. That's like having your own school district. All right. The long and the short of that is that we'll put some math together so that people can at least understand what we're talking about from an impact perspective. And then we'll have to talk about how we feel about that, the impact on citizens and impact on services in February. Next, the AI video messaging thing, Robbie? Traverse City, and I felt like I was hearing Maria Hansen. Sorry.
Other conferences last year, and we always meet with our, our vendors and stuff, they support us at these conferences and they help, you know, offset the price and such. So we make a point to go visit them and I meet a lot of people there and sometimes, you know, we end up working with them, sometimes we don't. Ran into a gentleman, Mike Baumwall. He's online right now. I just went unmute him and see if he needed to jump in here. The reason I showed that clip there is what he has, he, he has this system product, hard to describe, service that's AI-generated, really. I'm not explaining as well, I hope he could explain a lot better than I can, but what, what it does is it allows your website to show a video of staff or any other mayor, council, to provide information to the community on what's happening or what you expect or maybe about House Bill five eighty-one or anything you want. And it's, basically, you can have an AI script and you read that script and then you can post that video. So we get ahead of things when people have questions or concerns and, and sometimes there's information out there that may not always be right. And we can get ahead of that. And this is kind of a, it's, it's an AI tool, you know, thought, let me, let me share this with the council and see what they think about it. And he's, he's got a program that he, interestingly, when I started talking to him, he, he used to work for, for Twitter. And he, him and his partner did this, he did the startup. And I was like, oh, okay. So I learned a little bit more about the company. We talked a little bit and he showed me, this is just one clip of one city and they have multiple things. And I thought, well, this would be a really cool thing to get in front of when people start talking about, you know, hey, what's going on with T-Sploss? Or when, what are we gonna do for weather circumstances and just general information or special events or elections coming up or what have you? And the individual, you can have, you know, you have Mike Morton or, or Kevin DeGue or Greg Brad and they get up there and they can, they can do these videos and we just repeatedly do them over and over and as many as you want, just keep on loading them up there. And instead of folks getting their information through social media, you know, we always tell people, hey, if you want the information, come to us. Some people don't like to call us, some people don't wanna email us or check the website and that kind of stuff, but this will be video. So, Mike, Mike, can I explain that well? You still here?
Yes, that was great. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna show my face, my bald face, but I, I don't think the video was working. It's a, Rob, I think that was fantastic. And Mayor Reed, great to, great to see you again as well. That was a great explanation. I think the, the quick, high level idea is that Rob explained it's called REPT, short for represented. It's a video engagement platform that we built really with, with one main goal, which is to humanize local government. I think the, the problem that we tend to see and hear from local government officials and leaders is that trust within, especially local government, is that sort of an all time low? I think that's felt really on every level of government and we built this platform to humanize those who are really busting their butt and working hard to make their village, town, city, community, county greener, safer, healthier, happier. And so the, the idea behind the platform is pretty simple. We build a, a simple platform, you show with Traverse City, where residents can ask questions to the, the community, to many leaders, and either get an AI-based response to simple questions like, how do I pay a tax bill? Or how do I, you know, sign up for a particular program? Or they can get a video-based response from the mayor or from Rob or from a council member explaining and talking and providing more color on issues that do have a bit more nuance. And so the whole concept with this, so Rob's point is, how can we showcase the people that are, that are working hard every day? That are, that are running the community and a lot of the hard work that's being done that residents frankly just don't see. And so we would love and we work with communities across the country to help sort of own the narrative and educate and promote the great work that's being done within, within the community. So I, I provided a quick demo. I don't wanna bore anybody here with how it works, but it, it's a very simple concept. And we'd love to showcase the great work that's being done in Chinewee Hills.
So, yeah, that's, just wanted to put that out there for you guys to, to see if that was something you wanna think about or maybe we can take a deeper dive into it. It's just, there's a price, obviously, for anything, nothing's, nothing's free. But then I started thinking about, well, what's, what's the cost of, you know, an employee's time that we spend trying to redirect people and correct narratives and get information out? And how much time is that employee spending doing that? And we can do an end run through, through this kind of platform, you know, maybe that could be beneficial for us in the long run.
Robert, who would manage it?
It would be, I mean, probably fall on my shoulders for, for managing that part and help people, but this is almost, it's so turnkey that, you know, he was showing me there at the conference and you, you can see the, the, the video that I showed you, I can, Traverse City, there's multiple, I just picked one real quick, but they had a public works director talking about when they're gonna plow the streets because, you know, it's obviously up north. They're gonna plow the streets for the snow, they're not gonna do the sidewalks in certain areas and just kind of educate, it's educational. So you can pick on anything. The one lady was a PR person talking about an event coming up. And so it, it's one of those things where, you know, Chief Brett might come up with, hey, I wanna put a video out there that talks about fire safety or, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta burn ban from this time to this time and here's why. And or we got an exception to that where the burn ban's gonna stay in effect for this period, whatever, you come up with the idea. So to answer your question, it could be, it, it can be done without me managing it. Anybody, any employee can come and just, hey, we're gonna do it. And the cool thing about it is you can type in to like a chat GPT, the script, and it's almost like you got the teleprompter. So you can just sit there and I was watching one of them, the public works director, you could tell he's like reading a teleprompter and it's like reading the word for word, but, but that's okay, that's a comfort level. And then you got about, you know, sixty seconds or so to get that information out. I don't know the exact time, I mean, Mike can probably correct me on that, but it, it becomes very, it's very fluid. Almost like when we started up our website, you know, it was me doing most of the work all the time and then all of a sudden, you know, I can't do it all. And then, you know, Mike's doing stuff and, and Chris is doing stuff and Diane's doing stuff and Dana's doing stuff, so it becomes, becomes more of a teamwork.
And, and this, the way I understood it, it's kind of like your frequently asked questions thing can live online.
Yes.
And have thoughtful responses. And as you get new ones, you put them up too. And it saves people having to post into the ether on Facebook about whatever, they find the answer right away.
Right. And sometimes, you know, we, we get information like, hey, because we don't, we don't troll Facebook and social media or something like that, but we hear things are being said out there that are happening and stuff like, ooh, that's not right, but we're not gonna go on Facebook and getting this back and forth with them. Instead, what we could do is we go to this, we'll just, we'll say, hey, we heard this is happening out here, here's actually what's going on. And, and it gets that message out to a broader spectrum of people.
No, I think it's a great communication too because the more communication we can get out to the community makes a lot of sense. There's, now I was just asking those questions, how the management part of it and the script part of it.
Yeah.
What's the cost?
The cost is, he's got a pilot program that they do, it's a thousand dollars, one thousand dollars a month. And you do contracts, annual contracts, but a pilot program to see if it would work for us. It'd be three months, but it would be like first month free and then we pay a thousand the next month, thousand the next month. And it's like, okay, do you wanna continue this? Yes, you wanna continue it? No. So that's the way it costs. So that's why I said everything has a price, you know, there's a cost, but.
Does the cost structure change after?
No, no. Thousand dollars. So you think, I'm thinking, okay, twelve thousand dollars a year. You know, that's like, all right, that's, how much time does employees spend, you know, answering those questions?
What's then, like, what's the, what's the savings? Like, what's, I assume the city has a searchable frequently asked questions on the website or should?
We do, we do.
Which, okay, so if we have that, that's constituted of, you know, just brief paragraphs, answering questions that everybody asks all the time. We can just add to that. Are we?
I think more like what Mike was talking about, humanizing government. I think that lives because of the frequent asked questions, people might say, hey, what's the population in the city? Well, we're three two hundred. What's the tax rate? Well, you know?
Right, but, well, I mean, overlooking the irony of humanizing by AI, which I constantly confront.
There's AI, really.
I'm just wondering, what's the population of the city? Well, that's a number I can read in two seconds. I don't need AI and then somebody to be involved in that. So I'm just kind of trying to assess what's the cost benefit, something like this. Does it make work? Who's making these videos? I'm not gonna make these videos.
Well, you can if you want.
I, I prefer not to. I'll bartle me that one. Yeah, I, I would prefer, prefer not to personally. I'll bartle me that one. Um, yeah, I'd, I would prefer, prefer not to personally. Uh, but.
It certainly wouldn't be, I mean, for council, welcome to do so, provide information, particularly the, the chief executive. You know, officer of the city to make. Leadership comments and those kinds of things. We would, uh, the monitor to make sure people are doing campaign speeches out there and stuff, you know, we can't do that because then we get in big trouble. Um, but no, uh, just, just from a standpoint of just providing that. Extra level of service, this council member Foster was talking about getting that information out and just. You know, we're doing, we do it now. We just want to find ways to do it better. And, you know, I wasn't looking for this. It's kind of landed in me. I was actually talking to another vendor at the time. They walked me over to this, uh, to Mike and we got to. We got to talk, talking and stuff. And I said, well, this is very interesting. Um, so. Thought I'd bring it back to you guys. If it's, it was something you might be interested in.
And Rob, i- is it okay if I just make one comment? I, I'm very conscious of taking any time. So I, I'm really sorry for adding to this, uh, the time here, but. Fantastic questions and pieces and feedback. Um, one, a couple of things to mention, we like to think of REPT as a microphone and a megaphone. So it's like a microphone for allow residents to, to feel engaged and can step up to it and ask a question really wherever they are at any time of day. Um, and then two, it's a megaphone to Rob's point where you can. Record videos and practically send them out via email to the entire community. And so. Um, the, the time savings piece. It, with respect to AI, because I understand the, the concern around it being. Like if you're adding AI, how are you humanizing it? So the idea is with AI. The AI is really designed for simple questions. So the questions that don't require people to, you know, answer fifteen phone calls about. Whether it's paying a bill or, uh, you know, direction somewhere or how do you vote, things of that nature? Those are simple questions where the information already lives. The AI will just pull information from the city website. Uh, and answer those questions without a human interaction. The video sent part is really designed. Um, to explain and provide context around issues that are a bit bigger, that, that, that really require, uh, answers to why. And we've seen a lot of success with communities that have done that. And then once you record that video, it just, it stays in that library like the mayor mentioned. And so that anytime a, a resident in the future has that same question, they'll just get that video in response sent back. And so the idea is like, you only have to answer questions once, you get to see and meet the people that are running your community. Um, and you can practically take these videos and send them out the email to, you know, hundreds if not thousands of, of members of, uh, Chedouche Hills. So. Um, happy also to provide a demo. If, if that feels, not now, obviously, but for a later point, but. But thank you again for, for giving me a little bit of time to explain what we're doing here. And, uh, really the goal is we want people to get. Uh, feel familiar with those who are running the community, um, to help build trust, um, and really, uh, save you all time.
Thanks, Mike.
I think it looks, I mean, it seems like, like current event driven, that, that helps because we have a really hard time getting. That information out right now. I think we're folks can kind of, where it's interactive. But we can, I mean, can't we just kind of monitor and see how many clicks we get? And over time, if it's just like no one's using it, then we'll, that tells us something that it's not. It's, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming there's a monitoring feature where we can see who.
Yeah, we did have a, a few years ago, we had a, um, report. What's the name of that company? It was like a C Click Fix. We had a C Click Fix and we, we got that product. Then it was like, all right, you see it, you click it and you send a picture and, and, and nobody did it.
And I'm afraid that's what happened here. I mean, I, I love the idea of outbound communication. And I think we have very little internal, extra stuff. And I'm just afraid. Money spent for. See, so C Click Fix was the perfect example.
Yeah, I was trying to remember.
Because, uh, you know, the potholes and whatever, it made so much sense, right? People could take a picture of it and send it in and you could fix it and it just didn't happen. People don't think of it. Half a mile down the road. Well, that, that's, you know, that's the thing. I just, people just don't.
What I do think works though, it has, it's like Greg's, um, announcements, right? Like the.
Yeah, for hazard.
Hazard, there's pushed text message. Uh huh. I do think that's really, I don't know how many people have subscribed in the city, but. I love that.
What I can do is I'll, I'll send, I'll get Mike to send me some other links to some samples and I'll send them out to you guys. And also not that we don't trust Mike. But I'll reach out to some of those cities and talk to them and say, hey, you know, how's this working for you? You know, is this something that you would? You would encourage other people to do, kind of like we do with the enterprise, you know, enterprise fleet. I was like, I'm not gonna do enterprise fleet. What's, what's Chief DeGue talking about? He's crazy. Um, went talked to some other city managers. They go, wow, I wish I did that a long time ago. So. I'll reach out to some other cities that he's working with and, and talk to them a little bit. So no decision didn't need to be made tonight. Just wanted to share that with you guys. So thank you.
Thanks for your time, y'all.
Thank you. Next was just a, a quick comment. You know, there, there's been some conversation about this over the course of the last couple of months. Uh, a, a lot of it that I'm not in the middle of, but I, I keep hearing about just about elected official roles and, and in particular about mine. And I just wanted to put out there that, you know, we have. Two, two things here in the elected body, uh, the city council who are responsible for making the laws of the city. Looking at applications and things against those laws and approving them, not approve. And we have the mayor who, in the charters. Functional chief executive officer of the city responsible for making sure that the laws are followed. And, uh, doing the, uh, outbound communication around those sorts of things. And, you know, the, the places where I do that, that I've, I've gotten black over it are things like conversations with Fulton County Sewer or Atlanta. And, you know, uh, not just reading the charter, talking city attorney, but also talking example. This is local legislation to people that dropped this legislation. Uh, that's exactly what they see their role as well. So. Uh, you know, those sorts of things that I'm doing, working with staff with the city. Processes where putting out the code of city. Or talking to developers, make sure that they understand what the code of city, they're thinking of their. Elements coming and all that in that purview. According to the charter. And I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that that's what I think and that's what I'm doing. And if somebody wants to talk to me, charter. I do, happy to have a conversation. And I recognize I don't make policy something. Trying to make sure that policy gets effective. You know, I get that there right now, policy dip. Opinion differences on some things. Talking about zoning, and I know that some people on the council feel differently, but our code says, but the code is still my responsibility. I just wanted to put that out there and, and just an update on a couple of those things that I'm working on, because that's also something talked about several times. And, uh, that's always worthy of updates. And I try to give those when I can. We are still working Fulton County on trying to get an MOU place to govern. Works of the sewer down here. Now that we've got a couple of lift stations getting ready. Uh, that is something that. Look back at the record on, I've been pushing them to get that done for a long time. So we'll slower some, some other governments to get response, but we're working hand in hand to get it done. Uh, Atlanta watershed was a little more difficult, but we are now working to get that IG in place as well. Soon as we can get them, we can be done. Have people that want to hook up the sewer right now. So. That is a. Thing in particular on that, we spent the money to put the thing in place, need to have paperwork in place to be able to activate. Putting a lot of pressure on them to get that done. Soon as that gets through them, go to their, uh, commission, just like it'll come to our council for approval. And that's, that's where those things stand. There are other examples like that that I talk about in, but I just. Again, wanted to put that out there and happy to talk both here or off.
Two council members saying, I don't understand how we got here from there. And we were just told consensus. And that's the kind of thing where, well, no, if we had all, instead of meeting separately, and I've been part of these, I'm part of tenure processes and other ballistic engagements in which, in which you don't just have individual meetings, you have cross-checking. You have multiple-person meetings. So there is no disagreement about what was said. And one, one person is, you know, I've even been in situations where somebody takes notes and at the end, everybody signs off on the notes to agree what happened in the meeting. That's a way to do that. But, but, but what? There's no way we're going to do that. We're not going to sign off on a note in a meeting. We're going to let us discuss it. And we did, we did in November. We discussed it. There were some things that I did not like. I don't get mad because it didn't go my way. There were things in there you didn't like. And we heard about those as well. And then we publicly are accountable to everyone in here and we vote. And come our election time, we're accountable. It's very clear. I don't think there's, and maybe Rick can speak to this. Do other cities do it like that? How do other cities do this?
I certainly can't speak to all cities or all counties or why not. But in your published code of ordinances, at the very bottom of all of your ordinances, it has an adoption date, an amendment date, submit date. So you can go back any meeting to see what was done. Now, the redlining here, of course, that's the world I live in. I do all my commercial stuff, negotiating back and forth contracts. And so you can see who made changes when and whatever else. This is obviously very easy to read. I think the format makes a lot of sense. But taking notes at all meetings and, you know, having individual little durets or whatever with, with council members, now that's a requirement because of the open meetings. And in order to get things done, I have to have the back and forth with whatever your, whether it's a zoning matter or contract matter or whatever. And so not accustomed to notes being taken that, but obviously we take minutes at all the council meetings and we record work sessions and whatnot. So it's kind of a blend. You know, I think if you had an endless amount of money that you could spend on, on recording devices and whatever else to keep up with all that, then obviously you could record every single meeting. I'm talking about individual meetings, one-on-ones and whatever. But I think in the real world and what I'm accustomed to, when meeting with developers or there's folks trying to say, okay, this is what I'm bringing for you guys. What do you want to see? And I've never had experience where they're, where they're taking notes on, but always with the public. So it's, it's, you know, it's against whatever the council So it's, it's, you know, it's against whatever the council wants. But, but, but trying to do in these individual meetings is to have that conversation back and forth. So developer, again, we're talking zoning, telling the council, the planning commission, this, this is what I'm bringing to you guys, but you should be doing a hope. Tell them, well, you know, that's not going to work. How about this? Basically, what we were talking about today earlier with Scott, with the RICO and, I can't remember all the names of the roads here, but the, the Hamlet. You know, can we make those, the phase three connect to phase one and two? So those are the discussions that council ought to be having, hopefully is having with developers and say, look, this is what we want. We want to make sure this comes in. And so again, those are easier to have one on one. And so you have the conversation that the issue I always have with public hearings, but they got to, you know, it's the law, it's just so stifled, stifled. You know, it's, you can't really interact with the applicant. The members of the public can't interact with the applicant, which is why I think community meetings makes a lot of sense. Have, have those meetings and get input from the community where it's not formal. It's not timed. It's, let's just talk about it. But then when you come for the formal meeting, I get it. Got to follow the ZPK.
Should be clear too. I mean, a couple of other things, you know, in, in those conversations that we had before, the rationales that are in the highlighted thing here are something the consultants actually mentioned as we were having the conversation. So I'm not sure if it was written or not in a document we got, but we talked about these things.
Well, I, I have the document.
And. And we talked about the idea of consensus not being the right word, right? Because we had individual meetings and we knew that a council person maybe was unhappy with a particular item that other council members thought was important. And, you know, the fact is that sometimes there will be four one votes or whatever on something. Everybody's piece gets in there, wanted to. And that's just a part of the government's process as well. And I dare say that we probably spend far more time, far more understanding documents that are in front of us than, I don't know, your average congressman who gets a thousand page bill two hours before he's voting on it.
Well, you know how confident people are in them.
Well, that's my point. I mean, my point is that we do better than most. And I've been in a lot of other people's council meetings. I've been to other people's mission.
Yeah.
And doing better than we're doing is not a bad thing.
Right. That's what I'm.
Well, that's, that part I'm not, it's just, I'm just saying it's not like we hadn't had a thoughtful process. This is more thoughtful. The other point I want to make is that sometimes time is of the essence in these things. And there are two resoning applications that have come in since we didn't pass this that would have been impacted by this and might have been impacted to our benefit. And, and that's a thing too, right? And we have to always keep that. Every time we don't fix something that we know is wrong with the zonings, there might be another application that comes in in the meantime that now doesn't have that fix attached. And, and I mean, balancing the time is of the essence thing with the process thing is always hard. And people will probably see it differently. And we have to consider both of those pieces. In my opinion. So.
I had one question. No, I just want, I wanted to circle back to your original comment because I thought that was a good idea that Mike added the rationale. Because I had the other document and where we saw, oh, what was the comment? We would say summary of revisions. So that's what we had in the original document. And it, but, you know, that's not, so that would be like summary of revisions. And then Mike, maybe we could have staff rationale, like the next line down. Then that would just give a little more flavor for not just the summary part, but, because I know we verbally talked about the rationale, but that might be helpful. That's what I noticed when I looked at it. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I mean, those points were developed out of very typical slater processes. I didn't stop. It's just legislative tracking, making sure it's understood. And, and, and of course I understand. I don't write the zoning. I'm just a participant volunteer. So, so that's, that's not the issue. The issue is, is the public's confidence in what doing and how this kind of. Increases that confidence and gives us an opportunity to discuss one by one to come in and say, oh yeah, I understand that I wanted it this way and if you wanted it that way, I get that we vote on it. But it's all right here.
So if everybody's happy then with this kind of context being added, then let's add that to the rest of what we were talking about before and bring it back in and have that conversation and act on it. That, that makes sense to me. And in the context of the moratorium, you know, some of these things are the kind of like, you know, adding the requirement for public, ever are potential, not this change of the zoning, potential changes to the way our process works.
You know, the moratorium doesn't stop council from.
I totally get it. Totally get it.
You did think of.
Totally get it.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, you, you can go ahead and if you wanted to adopt these changes at the next meeting, you don't have to wait till the end of the night either.
Right.
Not rezoning property.
But pulling together some of the things that Scott has suggested, some like what Camille brought up today into a, an action that's responsive to moratorium issue, separate thing. But yes, that, that we can also do from this conversation. A lot of what we're talking about is coming out of this conversation. So we'll try to put a summary together, which points me also for the next meeting. Right? Just as a, as a, here's what we're hearing. You need to add this kind of information to each zoning request and blah, blah, blah. You need to add the requirement to the public meeting. And, and are we capturing all these things in a way that we can codify then as a separate issue from the zoning? But, right? To put a bottom line on that. And for people that have been walking in over the course of the last minute, wondering what the heck's going on with our council meeting, our work session is running a little long. So we're in the midst of finishing up our work session and we'll be rolling into our council meeting here as soon as we get done with that. So again, appreciate y'all being here and being patient.
Could.
Should have probably explained that earlier.
Can I just make a last?
Sure.
Suggestion on this too, which is, I, I see Charles and others back there. The, we have this great zoning board who are meeting soon and could also speak to this if necessary. But having their input seems like a smart thing to do.
I could, yeah, I could put this, this document as a discussion item on their next agenda.
I would love to see them discuss this.
Good idea.
I mean, not to throw more work at you guys already, but, but, you know, they're on point.
So. And so when the work is done on all eight sections, do we want to immediately enter the process? Or do we want to bring that into a work session before we start advertising, having first reads and public here?
Let's see where we come out with it. I'm not sure the answer to that.
Okay.
Not sure. One of those two answers.
Right.
All right. That is it for our work session agenda. Just two quick things before we stop. Darryl, can you give us a quick update on Rico Road? Cause I know that that is, I mean, I know what the answer is, but I'm sure folks would like to hear what the answer is.
The, the subgrade is finished, completed. They have the binder down from the bridge to a place of ferry. Now they still got to come back and top that section. That section not done and touch the driveways up. So last time I talked to him, these, of course, they dragged their feet. Now it's cold weather. So they're just waiting on another couple of warm days to put the binder on this, the section from the bridge to the parkway.
And then top coat also requires warm weather.
Yes, sir.
We are a hundred percent dependent right now on.
On weather. Yes, sir.
The vendor was way late.
Well, we remember this when we did next time.
We, we are, we are stuck because of that, but it's just important for people to know.
So why they pulled all the gear off? Saturday morning, they came and pulled all the.
Yeah, because I think they know that snowstorm coming. They're not likely to be working in the next few weeks.
Oh, okay.
Rick, would you mind giving us a quick update? We have had a lawsuit filed and I just want to quickly, whatever we can publicly say about that update, folks.
Right. Lawsuit was filed. This is an appeal for the denial of the rezoning for the village. It was filed on, to get the dates right, November 1. And we acknowledged service on November 4. Answer to the complaint was filed on behalf of the city. Through, was drafted by our insurance supplied, provided attorney on December the 4th. So it was timely filed with the court. We are now in the discovery phase with the holidays. I'm sure not much happened on that level. But I anticipate in the next two to three months, it'll get rather active. And so when it does get active, I will be providing more detailed reports to the council and executive side.
Thanks a lot. All right. Do we want to take a five minute break before we start the regular meeting?
Set up anyway.
Yeah, I do.
We got to set us.
Uh, no.
We need to move or we?
Yeah, yeah.
Moving.